Good morning. It is Tuesday, October 5th already. I've called to order the Story County Board of Supervisors meeting. Please stand if you're able and join us in stating the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
There are motion to adopt today's agenda. Second, the motion seconded is Merkin, Faisal, Devin's eye. We've got a public comment. This is the comment period for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Is there anyone who'd like to make public comment? I'm not seeing anyone else like online right now, so we will close public comment. We also have two proclamations this morning. The first one is a proclamation recognizing or commemorating the 76th anniversary of National Disability Awareness Month. Want to start Supervisor Beal?
Sure. Whereas October 2021 marks the 76th anniversary of National Disability Employment Awareness Month, and whereas the purpose of National Disability Employment Awareness Month is to educate about disability employment issues and celebrate the many and varied contributions of America's workers with disabilities, and whereas the history of National Disability Employment Awareness Month tracked back to 1945 when Congress enacted a law that declared that the first week of October each year, National Employee Disability Handicap Week. And whereas in 1962, the word physically was removed to acknowledge the employment needs and contributions of individuals with all types of disabilities. And whereas in 1988, Congress expanded the week to a month and changed the name to National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And
Whereas workplaces welcoming the talents of all people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and strong economy. And whereas in 2019, the number of Iowans aged 18 to 64 in the labor force with a disability who were employed totaled 79,980, with 53.2% of Iowans in this age group of a disability working at least part-time. And whereas 5.2% of the labor force in 2019 in Iowa includes individuals with a disability of some type. And whereas in 2019, while the unemployment rate in Iowa was 3.7%, the unemployment rate for Iowans with a disability was 9.1. And whereas activities during this month will reinforce value and talent people with disabilities add to our workplaces and communities and affirm Story County's commitment to an exclusive community that increases access and opportunities for all, including individuals with disabilities. And
Now therefore be it resolved that we, Story County Board of Supervisors, commemorate the 76th anniversary of National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And be it further resolved that the Story County Board of Supervisors call upon employers, schools, and other community organizations in Story County to observe October with appropriate programs and activities and to advance its important message that people with disabilities add value and talent to workplaces and communities. And be it further resolved that the Story County Board of Supervisors pledge to continue to take steps throughout the year to recruit, hire, retain, and advance individual disabilities and work to pursue the goals of opportunity, full participation, economic self-sufficiency, and independent living for people with disabilities.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the proclamation?
I move adoption and proclamation.
Second, the motion seconded is Merkin, Faisal, Devin's eye. Thank you. Let's have a second proclamation. Recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day. Whereas the holiday known as Columbus Day commemorates the Italian explorer Christopher Columbus and his voyages to the New World and beginning of the colonization of indigenous people that forever changed their identity, cultures, and achievements. And whereas Columbus Day has been a federal holiday since 1937, and whereas numerous cities and state governments within the United States now recognize Columbus Day also as Indigenous Peoples' Day in an effort to create a path of healing and reconciliation. And whereas Story County recognizes that indigenous peoples from lands that would later become known as the Americas to occupy these lands since time immemorial and
Whereas Story County recognizes and values the many contributions made through indigenous peoples' knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts, and a deep cultural contribution. And whereas Story County has responsibility to oppose the systematic racism towards indigenous people in the United States, which perpetuates high rates of poverty and income inequality, exasperating disproportionate health, economic, education, and social prices. And whereas Story County promotes the closing of the Equity Act for Indigenous Peoples throughout policies and practices that reflect the experiences of indigenous peoples, ensure greater access and opportunity, and honor our nation's indigenous roots, history, and contributions. And
Whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native nations to the United Nations-sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. And whereas honoring the role of Columbus as a historical figure promotes values of intolerance and violence that are still common in today's world and opposed to the values of the citizens of Story County. Now therefore be it resolved that Story County declares October 11, 2021, as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Story County, and that Story County strongly supports the proposition that Indigenous Peoples' Day shall be an opportunity to celebrate the thriving cultures and values of indigenous peoples of our region.
I would move approval of the proclamation. Second, the motion seconded is Faisal, Merkin, Devin's eye. Let's move on to patients here. Of course, we don't have any consideration of the minutes. We have the nine September 21st and September 28th minutes. And I believe Supervisor Merkin, you have some corrections. Do you want to take them separately?
No, no, no.
Okay, so let's look at the 9:21 minute, their motion to approve those minutes. I move approval of the 9:21 minutes. Second, the motion seconded is Merkin, Faisal, Devin's eye. Now we'll be on to the 9:28 minutes.
There. I've got just a few corrections that I would like to be considered. It's in the part about the research and outreach on code enforcement positions. Second, and I'll give these to the secretary when we're done. Second paragraph says discussions with communities in the county have led to the idea. I would like to say discussion with several communities because I don't believe we've talked with all the communities. And it says the idea of jointly funding a code enforcement position and the idea of them, the counties, jointly funding a county court code enforcement position. And then a couple of sentences later says Merkin reported on one model ordinance. I was confused when I read this and I remember what it was. And I'd like to change to Merkin commented on the need for a common ordinance because there wasn't a model ordinance. So it was a pipe. And then there's a title, next to the last line, it's wants, oh, and she wants to include. Just some changes for clarity.
And that's just. Any comment for discussion? I would move approval of the minutes. With the mentioned changes. Second. The motion seconded is Faisal, Merkin, Devin's eye. Let's move on to consideration of personnel actions.
I would move approval of personnel actions. Christian.
Second, the motion seconded is Merkin, Faisal, Devin's eye. I'm consenting, Janet. Anything being told today from Christian? Their motion to approve today. I was going to move. Second, the motion seconded is Faisal, Merkin, Devin's eye. Next, we're up to the public hearing items. Amelia Shulman in here. Good morning, Amelia.
Good morning.
Did I miss something?
I think you did. No, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Okay, so I have the changes that we discussed about the home business ordinance. For your consideration, I'm just going to talk about the changes since last time. I'm happy to go through everything again, but I didn't think, yeah, okay. Um, so next slide, please. Let's just skip over this. Okay, so we struck the requirement that you cannot have a satellite or off-site storefront location. Introduced a requirement limiting accessory structures to 2,400 square feet. This is the equivalent of 40 by 60, which is a pretty typical size for a pole barn. We had an intern who looked through our accessory structure sizes for home businesses and found that 2,400 was about average. We certainly have some that are larger though. And I looked into, you know, other places that have a restriction on the square footage of an accessory structure for our own business. And one thing I noticed is that they do allow existing accessory structures to be used if they're larger than that size, but require that, you know, if you've got a 3,000 square foot building, you can only use 2,400 square feet of it for the home business. So we're not encouraging folks to build more new buildings. We're encouraging reuse. And so then I added in that, you know, we do do reviews of these every two years. And if you're going to be using only a portion of your building, that review is going to potentially include an interior inspection. It's current practice. And then we expanded that to, you know, if you have multiple accessory buildings on the property and you're saying you're only using one, your biennial review could include interior inspection of this as well.
So just for clarification, if you've got a current building with an accessory structure, are they grandfathered in?
Yes.
Okay, so they have grandfathered it. This is only their
Yes.
new business and a new
New home business.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And we also talked a lot about nuisances from home businesses and how to better deal with those. And this is a pretty simple change, but simply stating that odor, noise, gas, dust should not be detectable at property lines. This is something I saw in Pope County's ordinance. Other counties had similar requirements, except no dust at neighboring residences. I thought the property line was a better, fairer cuff. So that's the change you see here. We also reached out to some home businesses because I could not find another county that has limits on freight deliveries, which is, it's not FedEx, it's not UPS. It's, you know, you have a package of a certain size or weight and our semi is essentially required to come get that up or drop it off. That's what freight is. And so I reached out, you know, we have some home businesses that are seed sales. They do receive freight deliveries. One indicated that he might receive a freight delivery one to two times a week. I've reached out to a home business that provides trucking services for area farmers as well about this requirement, and he's only got two semi trucks total, so they'd be within this requirement. But they're not really doing freight shipments. And I talked to a fencing home business and some of our automotive home businesses that might get parts, and they all felt that this was not something they'd be exceeding with their current operations. So one today is what we're proposing for a freight shipment.
I'm just asking a question.
Yeah.
If, I think it sounds reasonable. I'm just wondering, are we adding this in? What are we concerned might happen? If someone happens to have
Yeah, I think what we brought up last time was the noise that freight shipments create beyond traditional deliveries. How a larger impact from a semi truck going down someone's driveway and having to turn around 10 times. You know, creating the need for home businesses to have loading docks on their accessory structures. I think that was the feedback I got. If there's But again, we could not find other ordinances that had this requirement. So it was just based on, I made some phone calls to home business owners to get their thoughts.
Okay. Is this for clarification, something I remember from our week or two weeks ago? The 10th is this for 20 trips?
Yeah.
Is that a month? Is that total for the year?
It's a day.
A day.
Yes, yes.
And I have one more question. Is that that will still allow employees to kind of pick up a truck and then take it to a job site? That doesn't count against them for their
The employees can come and pick up a truck and take it to a job site, but you can't exceed the traffic limit overall when an employee comes to the site. So that's allowed, but if you're creating more than 20 trips a day because you've got, you know, 20 employees and everybody's picking up a truck in the morning, that would be
Was that one of the things that home business owners were concerned about?
Yes. No, they want it.
They want it.
Yes. So we got, we've had, we've not been able to permit home businesses that have off-site employees under the current ordinance. And we've had a lot of code enforcement cases about that with contractors who have, you know, five, 10 folks on a crew, and they don't come to the site. There's just a crew guy that comes and picks up the truck in the morning. So we got feedback from a few folks that they were happy about this requirement. I actually was not aware of this, but we had somebody come to the public information meeting that we held who's had issues in the past getting in conformance with the ordinance, and this will finally allow them to consider conforming with the ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Okay, I remembered that we had talked about it.
Yeah.
I just wasn't sure how that all fit in. I just want to make sure we're not creating rules for things that haven't been a problem that
Yeah.
we're doing is addressing.
Yeah, this is something that I think has been a problem in that we haven't been allowed to permit it. So. Okay. And then there is further discussion related to nuisances and hazardous uses. So we introduced a provision, and this is actually pretty typical where if a use is listed as something that requires a conditional use permit or is listed in our heavy industrial district as a principal permit use, you cannot have a home business for it. Some conditional use permits are defined as allowing home businesses within certain more strict parameters. And so those would still be okay. For instance, trying to think of my childcare centers. Like a lot of childcare centers. You can have a home business permit if you are a childcare center, which isn't a childcare home. It's like a larger facility. But I think these are uses like mineral extraction and salvage yards and slaughterhouses, petroleum refining, and hydro ammonia sales, propane distribution and sales that you probably wouldn't want your neighbor to be engaging in. And we can still allow through a rezoning, and that would take into more consideration compatibility with surrounding land uses for that process. And this is just further on the concern about hazardous chemicals or substances. With zoning permits currently, we've been asking for if you're going to have any hazardous chemicals stored in a building. So we're going to ask that with home business uses. And we could route it to Keith in Emergency Management or the applicable fire chief. You know, for instance, I think a lot of the times, you know, it's good to have that information on hand if you're a fire chief, if there is ever an issue, you know, we've got this amount of chemicals we're dealing at this location. And then just also adding our current process, which is we route these to Environmental Health for review and approval. And I know we talked about that last time, and I just thinking about it, realized it could be clearer. So those are all the changes we've made since last time. I did get a few calls from folks. I think word's getting out about the home business requirements. I think there is some confusion that we currently don't require home business permits at all. So I think there's an educational piece that we need to be doing. I'm going to look at adding that to our program. And, you know, we've got a few questions and on specific unpermitted home businesses that have come in from folks who are learning about the ordinance and realizing, hey, you know, I don't think my neighbor's within these requirements. And we've also got a few calls in opposition specifically to the parking max, like the maximum of five spaces for parking. And I think that there's opposition to that requirement because in one instance, someone says, well, that won't fit all my employees. And it's, they have eight to 10 employees. And so really, the issue isn't the parking. It's that they're not in compliance with the ordinance in terms of how many employees you can have.
Of the current ordinance that we have.
Yeah.
So they're not realized that they are currently not being compliant.
Yep. And that person didn't identify themselves. You know, we do operate on a complaint basis, but I have gotten a few phone calls from folks just in the past two weeks about, hey, did you know about this? No. So more outreach is definitely needed from our department next year on our program to do some education on home business permitting requirements.
So it sounds like the one you're saying too, it's some, again, to get realized you already have an ordinance that you were cleaning up, clarifying.
Yeah. Yep. There's a lot of that.
How can you really, and home businesses are something just kind of sprout up.
Yeah.
There's no audience out there.
Yeah.
How can you get more information out so people will realize?
My thought was, you know, we get a lot of phone calls when properties go up for sale of large accessory structures. Can I put my business in this? And we say, no, you have to meet our home business requirements. So I thought a good place to start would be Realtors. So when a property goes up for sale, they're aware of home business requirements. Yeah. But I just thought that was interesting, that a lot of the calls are opposed, but don't realize that these are just amended requirements and we have existing requirements on the block that aren't being met. So.
Well, looking at my notes from last time, and I think you've got them all. You limit this size of vehicles, freight vehicle, restricted kind of businesses. And I particularly, I think that's really good to clarify. This is not turning agricultural land into a heavy industrial district. And definition of nuisance. And you tripped out the prohibition of off-site business locations. You got 20 minutes for a B M accessory building. And it is somewhere else and was already there that employee had to live in the residence. Or not an employee, that the owner had to live in the residence.
Yeah, it's still in there. Yes.
Because there have been cases where I know businesses have rented to employees.
Yes, that is still in there.
Okay, and that is not okay.
And that is again current code or
Yeah, it's how we have been interpreting it currently. It is not clearly written, and this is going to help.
And it clarified the right, you've done a better job.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
So somebody's probably got a buy on it.
All right, then this is a public hearing, so I remembered that. So I will open the public hearing. If there is anyone online that would like to make comments, please use the raise hand function if you're on Zoom, so we can unmute you. Or if you're in the public meeting room, come on forward. Now wait a few seconds. I think I'll pretty much all let her on here. Our staff and reporter. I'm correct with the campaign name there. All right, well then I guess I will close the public hearing. There are no comments. Any other questions? Motion. Whether
I would move approval of ordinance to 96, amending chapter 89, Home Business and Science, Chapter 85, Definitions and 92.10, Requirements Committee in Story County Development Regulations in Story County Home Businesses on First Consideration and Second Consideration for Tuesday, October 12.
The motion seconded is Faisal, Merkin, Devin's eye. Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Yeah, thank you.
Next, we have consideration of Resolution 22-29, that this is your 22 appropriation. Good morning.
Good morning.
Need slightly tears up this. So what you have in front of you is, in July, we appropriated the FY22 budget. And with, the board appropriated 50% of the each department's budget with the exception of General County Betterment and County White Services. And August, we amended the budget and went ahead and appropriated those dollars. So what you have in front of you, in front of you right now is an amendment for the remaining 50% of everybody's budget so that they're 100% appropriated.
Move of Resolution 22-29.
And second. No, that's fine. Faisal, Devin's eye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was easy.
Pretty self-explanatory.
Right.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the discussion and consideration of responding to the CICS RFP for employer record. If you recall, CICS had been talking about moving from their current county employee to a regional employer. At our last CICS meeting, it was discussed that the administrative team and the employment committee would fill up an RFP and send it out to all in the region. I see Carly here. I think the only ones in the region it didn't go to were the counties that didn't have any staff in. I don't recall, but went to, just blanketly went out to everyone.
I believe it was sent to the entire county board. Yeah.
Right, so that they can make a determination of whether they wanted to submit or respond to the RFP. I'm bringing it to the board for your input. We have our meeting scheduled for their meeting on Thursday. Not the end of this month, the 28th of this month. I'm just seeing the timeline. I would want to have this invite to see even if we would like to respond to the RFP, and if so, then we need to direct staff to work on it. And if we don't, then, you know, when we have our next meeting, we will, they will know that they can receive a RFP in Story County, that we're not wanting to, and then employer record. We do have some information that the Auto Dooms Office provided us to consider with their concerns regarding the county employer record. I also, I will allow us to hear from our HR director as well, our Inter Operations Director in relation to this particular topic as well. I will note that they, the RFP would be intent that this would begin by January 1, which is still a pretty aggressive timeline. But again, we wanted more input and thoughts on it. We had a very robust conversation at our last CICS meeting. I don't think some of the folks expected us to spend probably an hour or more just on this particular topic and still all the things that needed to be potentially considered included. That's why I'm seeking your your thought, your input.
No, um, just, I, I think Russell did ask if the board decides that they're not interested in responding to the RFP, that we just let him know. Um, either by the end of this week or when, you know.
That's right. That's what I was thinking. I was thinking that we have to just have it come this week, so. You did. And for those online, Russell, it's Russell Wood, it's the CEO of our CICS region. So I know, I mean, I know, um, uh, looking at some of our staff, basically would like us to consider um, being part of the re- the region. The region itself would be looking on taking on thirty-four employees and the impact that would have on just our auditor's office and HR. Um, the RFP was provided as well. I think it provided more clarity. Um, than just the conversations before, when you have this verbal, it's real easy to interpret what you think it is until it's something more concrete as to what Good morning.
So I've, I've glanced through, um, the RFP. Um, there are some. I would say it's pretty much the whole HR. What we offer our departments and offices is what they're looking for. I wasn't sure how in-depth it was going to be, um, just by them saying they wanted HR services, but it, it looks like everything from guidance on employee issues to compliance with uh, federal and state rules and regulations, they would be included in all, all of the reporting would be. Um, looks like it would be done by HR. Um, they do say that they want that they would have their own set of policies and procedures based on ours, that they would be developed in conjunction. So I don't know if they're, if they're gonna follow our policies or, you know, kind of tweak them. Um, so that would include some time from HR to help the admin team or whoever does that. Um, looking at benefits, um, usually your employer record, it's pretty typical that they, they, they on your, on your payroll and benefits are, are pretty much the two things that are pretty common. I do want the board just to look at for medical insurance, we are self-insured. So that could, you know, I mean, we don't know the thirty-four, whether they will take the insurance. There's just a lot of unknowns with, with that. Uh, we are also self-insured for our short-term disability. So if the board does respond to this RFP, I would want it included that they would pay for the, the short-term um, disability, since we do pay that. And we but that's a piece. For the other insurances and different, different pieces. There could be incurred costs, but it looks like you could include that, you know, that they would want to do the evaluation, use our evaluation system. That's based on the number of employees or fees. So I mean, that's something that we would want to take into consideration as far as um, bill out the additional costs, because I don't think their intent is for the employer of record or the employing county to absorb the costs. It looks like we would be able to bill back those direct costs. It's kind of how I looked at, looked at this. Some of them you can't bill back, like the self, uh, the health insurance. You know, we would have that, we would charge them full premiums, and then we would pay the claims. So that's how that would work, just like we do for our regular employees, would be no difference. Um, I didn't see anything in here about like, they, they say hiring, but like, I would, I would think the employing county would do the job posting. Do you know? That wasn't included. I don't know if that was discussed.
I don't know that we specifically identified that.
Okay.
I would think we would want to work with.
With, with the, there. So it looks like, um, that's the only piece that I didn't see within here, but it looks like all the pre-employment screening, different things like that would be handled by HR. Do, do you have any specific questions in regards to can we, can we take this all on? I think it'd be really difficult to take it all on without looking at additional staff. Um, we are probably staff appropriate, appropriately for about two hundred and fifty full-time employees in HR. Um, if we utilize, you know, what we currently have, um, because we do cover safety, workers comp, those aren't split out. We handle the liability insurance, all the claims. So it's not like, if you look at how we have it set up here at the county, it's not just HR, it's also that risk management piece. So, uh, currently, um, you know, if they're looking at a January first of twenty-two, um, we, we wouldn't be staffed appropriately to take everything on, but you know, I would, I would come to the board and get things put in place if the board wants to go in that direction. I never know how much, you know, they, they talk about guidance on employee issues. It could be really time-consuming and it could be not time-consuming at all. And it, and it just kind of changes, so. You know, to determine, and, and I typically handle the majority of the employee issues and work with department heads or elected officials through that. Um, the other piece that we do get involved is our civil attorney, because there are some when it deals with, you, you know, federal laws, you know, discrimination, different things like that, that, that we do, uh, a lot of our, the majority of our investigations are internal. So I, I think that would probably be encompassed um, upon HR expertise or guidance and different things, so.
So would you mean you would see it as our civil attorney advising you on matters to CICS employees?
It, I mean, we do, or, or work with the, the, the regions that attorney, because I know they, they use Gal, Mike Galway, I think we are using him right now. Allers included. So there, there would be an interaction. We don't, we don't use legal on every situation, but if there, there is something that's, uh, you know, we get into a, a litigious situation.
Potentially be using historic county employee, be going to our county attorney's office. Yes, yes, employee going to Mike Galway.
It would depend how the region would set that up.
There are any, I, I just think you talked on this a little bit. And is there any additional liability on you?
You, you know, I think, I, I, I asked him a little bit if, if it was a decision of the board, the board employs me, um, I think our, our insurance would cover. I mean, there's always liability, there's always, you know, but as long as I'm acting in my professional cap- capacity within the scope of employment, um, our liability insurance covers it. Now, is there a risk that you can, you know, have personal life? There, there always is. But, um, with any, any position or role. Um, but I, I do believe that our ICAP insurance would cover. If you have a formal agreement to offer these services, that, that we would be covered. I don't know how everything works since you know, if there's any employment matters, you know, I, would the action be taken against the region since the region employees? I, I do believe that's how that would, would work. But, but they, you know, since we're providing that HR, would be providing that HR component, there would be um, potential county liability too, because I'm an employee of the county, so.
And do you have any thoughts of how for them to like, um, workers comp, like there were other injuries from
Sure.
folks at other counties? How that would, I mean, how would you do that investigation or?
I mean, we might have to work with the supervisors and different things. Um, you know, we have a lot of, like here, we, we contact the, the you know, the supervisor or director, look at different things. Um, see, you know, what, is there some policy or equipment failure or different things like that? I think it would be handled the same way. It's gonna be a little more difficult because it's not here. So it might take a little bit of, uh, you know, do you have to go on site? Um, now I think as far as IMWCA, they would, it, it'd just be a different work site. Uh, now, if they're working at different places and we are the employer of record, the, the other thing we would have to take into consideration is the OSHA logs. They would have to be per site like we do here. Uh, so that would be something that would, would, you know, encompass a little more. Be a little more complex than what we do now, because they are per job site is how Iowa OSHA has the regulation set up, not the employer. So we wouldn't be able to cover everything under the admin. I mean, we do it by building admin, HSC, all of the departments with, that work at that location are all, all those injuries. Those injuries are logged.
logged.
Yeah, I don't want to get too
No, that's fine.
Information, but just know that there would be additional, if you take on employees that work at additional sites, there'll be some additional OSHA reporting that we would, that we would have to do as the employer of record. Not yet. That, that would be something. Uh, I did talk to Ethan a little bit about it. I mean, if we're working within, I, I don't want to speak for Ethan, but, but he had the same consensus, if we're working for, within the scope of our employment, our liability insurance would cover our employees. I can send our, uh, information out to ICAP. Um, we do, you know, you, you're insured for being on the CICS board. I mean, the boards and commissions that you serve on in any action, so you know, what would it do to the premium? I have no idea. You know, I would, with workers' compensation, we would have more payroll, so our premium would go up. Um, but we do charge that out to different funds, so that would be available. Expense too, to the region. If you put this much payroll, what do they say, one point eight million? Payroll, obviously, based on the work comp code, it would increase it by a certain amount, and we would, you know, break that out and bill that out, so. It, it would be difficult to track. I'll, I'll be honest. I would, you know, if they're gonna, if they want to build for our, like our, my hourly rate to keep track of all that, is, it's gonna be somewhat difficult based on, uh, different things. So while that seems like the best way to do it, there might be, you know, you just might, might want to do a flat fee or, y- you know.
Sure.
Um, we don't want to create enough extra. It's, you know, when you have to, when you have to log all those hours for either a FEMA or, or different stuff. That takes a lot. You want to, you almost need some documentation to back up those hours of that. Um, it would take a little, it's do, it's doable, it just takes.
I'm not even sure what this means. The cost should be identified, is that like for the next year? And then you say it's gonna cost you two dollars and thirty-five cents a month per employee for the, every month for the next year? So you're having to project or estimate or guess? Going to take, put in there, or is it that every month you identify the cost and then you say this month was five dollars and sixty-three cents per employee, next month, who knows?
I read it more of a monthly billable.
Yeah, I believe so. When we talked about this, Russell had done some research and he had seen where it could be anywhere maybe from like five hundred dollars a month per employee up to fifteen hundred dollars a month per employee, based on the research that he saw. So I think it would be an established rate that would be charged per month, per employee, was my understanding.
So it wouldn't be per hour that HR put there. It would just be a
When you look at it all, it's the same.
Twenty-five percent of your time or something like that. Obviously, that's.
It, it's not easy to project, but you know, there's so many different variables, but you, you could come up with, you know, figures for that if you, if you want to. Um, so, so I would say the main thing to consider would be the time, like the January first is, is pretty, that would be to get everything ready and be ready to go by January first, staffing wise, getting everything. We, we are, you know, I'm just getting sta- I just got staff hired, so I need to get them up to speed on county policies and different things like that. So, so the January first is, is pretty close in the future, but I don't know if they're you know, if, if you respond to the RFP, if you could put a later, later date of having the full array of, of services or not. You know, some of it, you know, onboarding will take some time for whatever county does it, you know, you gotta onboard, get up, get them set up for benefits, insurance. Um, you know, different things like that. Um, thirty-four isn't a huge amount of employees, so, um, but it does take a little bit of time to get those. Because we, Story County does administer all their benefits internally, so we don't use, use any external companies to administer our health, dental, vision. We administer all of our COBRA, we do all our FMLA internal, so everything is it is internally right here. So, and I don't know how other counties, I know some of them contract out COBRA administration, different things like that, so.
I think I've made my point very clear
Yeah.
to all of you.
And I will add too, just for my colleagues as well, is that at our next meeting, and actually even at the last meeting, I know there's been conversations of little like Franklin County or another county, they just said that they would be entertaining for the conversation. So the region, really, they don't have a set county. It's not necessary that they're set on an employer of record. They've also had some conversations, but do they look at becoming their own entity? Their own employer, I should say, or do they look at another, another avenue for someone else to beat that employer of record versus the county? So I just want to make that sure that it is not, there's not one county or whatever that's gun-ho saying, yep, we want to do it. They just said she would be willing to just have the conversation and look at, and that's why they came up with um, having the RFP. So it was just a little more clearly defined as to what they're looking at. Um, now I know probably they took out IT out of here. Um, so would just in general, like in a twenty-eight E agreement be then, if I think back to our twenty-eight E that we're looking at? Because phones for example, or computers and all of that. I am just trying to figure out that, to me, technology, how does that fit in when we're saying, no, you do a third vendor for IT. Are you clear on that? I just want it clear by, by what Russell said in his letter.
I, I think our hope is that we'd be able to work with individual counties to ensure that there's phone internet access available to employees to be able to use wherever their office is at. So working with those individual counties to ensure those services are available. And then separately have a contractor hire IT, I'm not sure what it would look like, but have an IT staff person that could be there to support all of the CICS staff. Uh, also assist with any computer, you know, purchasing, hardware purchasing, those kinds of things that we would have that service available through an IT.
So when you check that first level, would necessarily be on the county's internet system, or would it be more like a county guest system or?
Right, I think we'd have to work with each individual county to see what that IT department is is comfortable with. I know in having conversations, and I see Barb was on, she may be able to speak to this a little bit more, but in having conversations with Barb, it wouldn't be that we would be on Story County's network, so we, we wouldn't have access to like our G drive, H drive, S drive, those kinds of things. We would, um, hopefully potentially have internet access to another.
And Barb, if you wanted to share anything more. Barb, are you on?
Hi, I am unmuted. Um, yeah, Carla and I have had a couple discussions about the separation and the support. You know, when we had other guests in the building, we had them use the guest network for internet access. And since then, the, the connection has been updated, so it's a little more And since then, the, the connection has been updated, so it's a little more robust and um depending on how many. Uh, users we have on this guest network, I think we can accommodate the internet access that they need and, you know, if it's not enough, uh, we can work from that. I think the best way to, to really approach it is to see what we've got and if it's not working, we'll have to look for some other options. But I think um the initial framework is in place that we can get them what they need. I assume it's just internet access, they won't have any file servers or anything stored onsite. Is that your understanding, Carla?
I mean, primarily we use Office three sixty-five, everything is going up to.
Okay, yeah. So I think we, you know, it'll, it'll take a little discussion, a little trial and error, but I think we'll be able to accommodate what they need.
Thank you. Does DHS use the guest network? That's the access, I'm, I'm concerned about, I'm just thinking about security and using a public wifi.
Well, the wifi would be locked down, there's a lot we can do. There would be, it would be similar to a guest network, but not the same guest network. And DHS has their own connection. And if that's the route, you know, it, and if they find out the wireless is not an option. That is in a good location in Ames where we can bring in a separate connection for them to use, similar to what DHS is doing.
Right, 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 right. I know that Alyssa's done, uh, I mean. Played out some concerns that she has. Lisa Marple and Officer Martin have provided a letter with all of their. Their current responsibilities and all of their concerns, that is not possible at all, knowing the. Increase workload that would happen down. And it looks like you're, what the letter says is that you're really capacity of being able to take on. Absolutely, anything more.
Absolutely. Because it's not just thirty-four employees, that's not how that works.
It is, what would make it, what would make it look like that? If Story County said, okay, we'll consider this, but you have to do. Everything exactly the way you do it, there's no, there's no difference between. This person who works in Franklin County and this person who works in Story County, they're all Story County employees, we're doing everything exactly the same. If, if that was the proposal, is that a possible, a possible way to do it? And not have, well, this is like having a full another board, like you say in your, in your letter.
I, I don't know how it would be different. I, I don't know how, I, it would be another board that is in charge. Period, even if they're following our rules, there's interpretation, there's.
Yeah.
Um, oh, well, we're going to do this as opposed to this, we're going to do this as opposed to this, so we keep track of, oh, they do it different. Having another um board that is in charge of. Those employees. Adds.
Right, yeah.
Extra. Issues.
And they would not be Story County employees.
Correct.
Yeah, so they would, right, all the way, everything.
Correct. They would, they would do what they, yeah.
Right.
And, yeah, I think the turnaround was to have. If we want to submit an RFP, have we extended by the twenty.
Twenty seconds.
Yeah. Yes. So that they have it in time for the next.
Well, I have some concerns. Yeah. We're putting our, our HR director in position where she would be advising. Supervisors of, of employees, CICS employees who aren't in any way. Reporting for, or aren't Story County employees, normally, you know, you were. You're advising supervisors who are Story County employees, and that gives some, you know. I see a difference here, advising people, they may be employees, but they may be under, but they're under a different board. As said, they may have some different policies, which is the other thing I'm concerned about, because I think um. Here, we're going to take Story County. Take Story County policies, then we're going to revise them to meet CICS needs. So what that ends up being is really two sets, you know, we kind of have that with conservation, conservation board of response. But it's very seldom they do anything that's, that's, that's really different. And they may add a little tweak or something, you know, it's about when their buildings or something, but I have not seen since I've been on the conservation board that they've been. Doing major change, they're saying, well, this has to be different because we have a different business or, or something like that, I would be a little. I would be a little concerned. More than a little concerned about how much changing that would be and what you'd have to deal with. Because of that, and the other thing is we have. Got a, a long, long term, longstanding in HR employee leave, right, HR journalist, and you're. You're going to be sharing off with another, with a new person. Who, who, person I'm sure, but is somebody who doesn't know our system. So it doesn't seem like that's a good timing. You said it would be difficult to take on that additional staff, that's yet another staff person to train at that point. And I wouldn't want you to take them on without the issues. It does create more. So I'm, Andy, and I, I very touched on what the auditor was saying, I did ask the auditor about. We'd be hiring additional staff, whether or not you do it, and I don't think she was comfortable with. Some way that things are set up right now. It's a good structure, and she felt like we'd be messing with the structure in ways that she wasn't, you know, crazy about, so. I think there's, you know, the, the RFP did certainly help, it was certainly a lot better than, you know, having verbal, you know, notes from a verbal, um, you know, meeting. But there's still just a lot of things that I think are going to take a lot more time than what somebody would anticipate, and it could just be. It's, it's hard to know what we'd be, what we'd be fighting off right now. And, and given. You know. Well, then we have with HR right now. An election year coming up. The auditor's office, and the string that's something longer for us, just. And it, it's not much to be different for any, any other county, but our primary concern is Story County. I'm, I'm not, I'm not in favor of us doing the work right now, put in an RFP, something that we're not.
I mean, I, I wouldn't see how adding another employee in the auditor's office would really. Have any kind of positive effect, it's just giving the same people doing the same.
Yeah.
I can see how that would worry. Yeah.
Yeah, there's just, yeah, there's so much involved in it, that's why I felt I wanted to. Get your input versus me being my like a representative on the governing board, really wanted everybody input. Certainly you'd want folks to come back and build Ashland, never asked me here, we never had any discussion.
I do have one other thought too, that, that's something I really concerned. Is the state DHS role in health and legislature's role and the continued changes in statutes. I almost feel like this isn't, uh, you know. This is the one she dropping. Um, and I would hate to have our staff involved, take all this time, set up a system, and then in another year, the legislature. Decides they, you know, not to line them, but don't, they've got a better idea about now health again. And, and I feel like we could just be. Passed around in, in this, and, and if, if I felt like this was really stable, was this the way it shouldn't be, maybe I, I. But I, I just don't have.
Oh, so I might be showing a little input here, because I did say discussion consideration of responding, do we need to vote that to not respond, or do we just? Kind of similar, since I have our president is.
Yes, especially consideration, I, I think that that would be.
Whether we want to.
Yeah.
If they want an answer, we need to do whatever.
Okay.
Try to, try to turn, I don't know, but I can make a motion.
Sure.
I would move that we decline the opportunities with the RFP. Yes.
I would second. The move, just second, is any further discussion? Now, I just want to say thanks, Carla, for getting us the information or whatever, so I put it on the agenda so that we can have this discussion. Perkins? Stace? That is right.
I want to thank all our residents, yes, yes, and of course, I know it's a difficult time, and this is no way. Please don't take it in any ways, meaning Story County is not supportive of employees and CICS. For Story County as a whole, to me, it just makes me.
Thank you, and I appreciate the board looking at this, I certainly understand um your decision and, and reasons for that, so. Thank you for taking the time and working this through with us, appreciate it.
Certainly, and as I said earlier, we have not made any decisions as the governing board, this is the direction we're going to go. At all or not. You know, this year was the one to take a further look at becoming regional. Regional employment entity. But certainly it's not a reflection on the staff that we have, we brought great staff who provide essential services to the people in Story County. And listening to them and to their concerns, they're trying to mesh that in with what the region wants. As well, and then I'll call, I think, the region. Will want an employer record for a year or two years and then potentially move on to becoming their own entity.
I would, I would think that's a lot of potential for CICS being its own entity and providing some administrative services, I don't know what, you know. This would cost for Story County to actually provide these services. So when you look at payroll services that are out there, and you look at a lot of services that can be contracted for. Accountants can be contracted for, I've seen small agencies do a, a fairly good job of contracting for those administrative services and media. Manage those contracts and the things that keep contracts. I, 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 I know some agents that I, I could think of other agencies that size, if anyone would look at that. I think it would, it would, then they get out the personnel policy that they wanted, they needed for that performance measure system. They can have the salary stipend they wanted, it would take some much setup work, but there are a lot of models out there, they can even model. Start with Story County's personnel costs.
Right, you don't have to.
You don't, you don't have to invent the wheel, and you don't have to do it all internally. So I, I, I think that might be a, a cleaner way, honestly, of doing it.
And I can tell Russell if he's like.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I will do that. Thank you. Now, the time for public forum number two, comments from the public outside of that on this agenda, the board may not take any action on the comments due to the requirements of the meeting law, but may do so in the future. I will, if you're on Zoom and would like to make public comments, please click the raise hand function, which will unmute you. Wait a couple of seconds, but I believe most of them are county staff still. Not seeing anyone propose public comments to liaison assignments, maybe update and announcements, supervisor, Stace, do you want to start?
Got the space meetings work sessions tomorrow morning. Public office tomorrow. Transportation collaboration evening. A website. A long time librarian in Nevada that's retired, the retirement plan is tomorrow afternoon, four to six. She's been there for over twenty years, I believe. Linda White?
Linda's retired?
There's also P and Z meetings, so I'm not sure, I'm going to do both those things, but I'll figure that out. Um, and then our first supplemental input meeting for the ATEC action plan is tomorrow evening. Alternatives, team meeting on Thursday. Lots of, lots of random meetings all over. Hopefully a task force on Monday and this will be.
Thank you.
President. Yeah. The space meetings, study tomorrow morning, and the public state law, us as well. And I'm involved in a childcare conversation that United was sponsoring tomorrow afternoon, it's just a. Um, the things that happened in another county, um, that I, I just gave some suggestions to impressing, she said, well, let's kind of. Let's kind of talk about what state is the childcare in Story County right now, so. I was asking part of that, I guess, because I brought it up, so. On Thursday, we have the headwaters of the South Stunt to be made. In Story City. And reports from consultants are on, on where they are in the watershed assessment they're doing. Friday, we have a bridge tour.
That's the question, we were going to still do that. I didn't hear.
Yes, there was a email that, that came. Email. Yeah, so whether we would still want to be doing that. Whether we want to use one vehicle or two, but then also our engineers that, 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 that he might also, there also might be work on the E eighteen bridge. Friday going that he needs to be. Be involved with, so, yeah, just came this morning. It came from Sandra.
Oh.
Yeah, it was titled Friday's Bridge Tour.
Oh, okay.
That was something I was going to ask her at this time, is whether we wanted to.
Okay, I'll have to check, I can't see.
Whether we wanted to postpone that. Okay.
Oh, right, great. We're going to need to reschedule if, if that's, I mean, it sounds like this may not be a good time for it.
It doesn't so much.
That's, that's my understanding.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, the other thing is I am meeting a few staff on Monday, I have some questions, I've been looking at the quote section, the administrative roles on pipelines. And we attended that public meeting on pardon sequestration pipelines proposed, I have. A lot of questions about how it fits in drainage districts, etc. That's your little, so I asked the staff members, if I, if they just get together with me and I can see if they have the answers to the questions. If not, I'll see what the IED and OCA does to say. Very interesting. Book him on that Monday.
I have Board of Health meeting this afternoon, I have a park meeting this evening. I have the space meeting as well, I also have a children's uh, behavioral health advisory meeting tomorrow, and we have the Public as well, but I think for myself, those might. Overlapping on that, I'm also meeting with Nick at Merit Relief Thursday afternoon on the Thursday project, I'd be interested to know more on that. Then I also have the planning and zoning meeting, via Zoom. Thursday, I attended a poll for a meeting that that. It's not, that will go off my calendar, so my Thursday will be more open. Friday, I have the AEDC, that meeting, and then I will take the bridge tour off of my calendar as well. And then Monday, I'm going to partake in. And then Monday, I'm gonna, I'll take in via Zoom. It's a, came to that, that workforce group that I'm on, it's a building and skilled workforce. I did pass the path to Nikki with Ames Chamber as well, and so she had the Zoom. You can do either in person or via Zoom for this morning meeting, so I passed it on to Nikki, that would be good. I want to zoom in, see if it's something that really, a focus that as a supervisor to be a part of, since I serve on that regional group, they can announce also to supervisors. But I think it's more directed to our workforce development centers and other businesses, and that's why I have that to Nikki, since she's doing that outreach, but I thought I would at least check out part of it and see.
Be interesting if you wait.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's all on my agenda. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn? The move just seconded. Basil?
I.
Markin?
Seven.
You're adjourned.